Welcome to the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County General Election Candidate Forum for Gig Harbor, Council Positions 1, 2, 3, and 7. I am Lydia Zapata, the co-moderator, and Tony Hester, Tacoma College, Community College Student Government Vice President of Legislation and Records is also co-moderator. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our community sponsors, we welcome the candidates and audience to this community candidate forum. Tony?
The League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County acknowledges that we are gathered on the ancestral land of the Coast Salish peoples. We are surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tahoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships and honor indigenous cultures, history, identities, and current realities.
The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 100 years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways that we do this. Anyone 16 years and older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on membership, please go to our website, www.tacoma-pierce-lw.org. That's www.tacoma-pierce-lw.org.
The candidates in ballot order are for Position 1, Jenny Wook and Robert Wilds. Position 2, Roger Henderson and John Scanty. Position 3, Jim Brannich and Brenda Lichtenz. And Position 7, Seth Storson and Spencer Aberstall. Roger Henderson was unavailable and John Scanty did not respond to plenty of requests to participate today. The general election is on November 2. If you are not registered to vote or have moved, you can register at votewa.gov by October 25. Again, that's V-O-T-E-W-A dot G-O-V by October 25. You will receive a ballot by October 18 if you are registered to vote. All ballots must be postmarked or dropped in the voting ballot box by 8:00 PM on November 2.
Tony, you might just check your microphone to be a little closer. This forum is being recorded and will be posted at the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County website, again, www.tacoma-pierce-lw.org. Questions have already been submitted by the community and our cosponsoring organizations and edited by members of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County. Live audience questions can be texted to 253-948-6029. That's 253-946029. Text your questions if you're a live audience member. Questions have to be directed at all candidates and may be reworded or consolidated. Go ahead, Tony.
Terry Baker from the League of Women Voters is our timekeeper. She will hold up cards to let each candidate know when they have 60 seconds remaining, 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds remaining, and the card to stop. When you see the stop card, you may complete a short sentence. Please stay on gallery view so that you may see myself and Terry Baker. Do not speak unless it is your turn. Stay on mute until it is your turn to speak. The audience will be on mute and cannot access the chat function.
A reminder that civility is expected. I ask each of you to indicate that you agree to our ground rules, which among other things means that you agree not to make personal attacks. Please confirm by giving me your thumbs up. Thank you all. Um, go ahead, Tony.
Each candidate will have two minutes to give an opening statement. After that, the questions will rotate in order and all candidates will be asked the same question. At the end, you will have one minute for your closing statement.
The order of the opening two-minute statements is in ballot order. So we will start with Jenny, and I do believe we did not get Jim here. Nope, he's not here. So it will be Jenny, Roger, Brenda, Seth, and then Spencer. Jenny, please go ahead.
Yes, good morning Gig Harbor and good morning League of Women Voters. I'm Jenny Wook and I'm running for reelection to the Gig Harbor City Council. Just like our citizens, I love Gig Harbor. I am so very proud to be endorsed by our Gig Harbor Police Officers, our firefighters, our city employees, and their supervisors. You know, four years ago, when I ran and was elected to council, I made some promises. I believe in keeping those promises, and this is what has happened in then. I have voted to reduce density. I voted to reduce clearcutting. We don't allow clearcutting of trees anymore in the city limits of Gig Harbor. I voted to fund police officers. I gave grants to small business owners during COVID. I voted to forgive $588,000 of utility bills during COVID. I voted to complete the paddler stock, and we're going to see that construction happen in the fall of this year. I also voted to put in pedestrian crossing lights. I was a big proponent of that, and that happened just before Swiftwater Elementary School opened in Gig Harbor North. During the next term, I'm supporting the village in Gig Harbor North and a grocery store for those folks, the sports complex in Gig Harbor North. The greatest honor of my life has been to serve the citizens of Gig Harbor and to represent your voice with my vote. I ask for your vote before November 2. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Roger? Roger, you're on mute.
Yep, got it. Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for setting this up. I had the honor and privilege of participating in your July candidate forum during the primary. Had a great time, and I'm excited to be here to answer questions today. Just a little bit about who I am. I'm a retired civil engineer. I worked 30-plus years with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Sacramento District. I have a degree in civil engineering from Oregon State University, a degree in environmental planning and management from University of California Davis. I live up in North Gig Harbor, married, three kids, all live outside of the state. I'm an avid walker and cyclist, and I currently serve on the Parks Commission for the City of Gig Harbor. Just a few notes on why I'm running. As an engineer, I want to bring data-driven discussions and deliberations to the council. I do want to bring more respect back to the city council and to our great city staff, who have lost so many over the last many years, and to the public as well. My goal and my challenge is going to be tackle our opportunities that are facing challenges and opportunities facing Gig Harbor right now. I do want to expand public input via commissions, and I really, really, really want to keep Gig Harbor a city that we can brag about. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda?
Good morning. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event this morning. My name is Brenda Lichtenz. I'm a first-time candidate running for Position 3 here in Gig Harbor. I grew up in the Pacific Northwest. I'm the daughter of an Air Force veteran and a working mother, and the core values instilled in me that people are different should be and should all be respected has helped me throughout my life strike up conversations with people and define common ground. I went to the University of Washington in Seattle, where I received both my bachelor's and my master's degree in training to be a nurse practitioner. I've cared for our critically ill newborns and pediatric patients for the last more than 30 years. And we recently, about six, seven years ago, relocated to Gig Harbor as my children grew up, graduated from schools, and we decided this is the place we want to be for the long haul. I love Gig Harbor. I bring a lot of skills to the table as a career of a nurse practitioner in program development, quality improvement, but at the core of what I believe is compassion and respect and to work together to get things done. I find Gig Harbor is filled with so many kind-hearted citizens who are engaged and want to be involved in our city. And I think leaders or people are looking for leaders to represent their voice and to bring their views to the table. I believe that we should support the preservation of downtown Gig Harbor. I think that growth needs to be responsible and well-planned, and I believe we can compassionately listen to citizens from all neighborhoods and bring their voice to the table and listen to the things they want. I look forward to hearing your questions and issues, and I thank you for your time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth?
Hi, good morning. Well, first, just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. Great to see some of the council candidates on here, so I look forward to. I'm a longtime Gig Harbor resident. I grew up actually on Fox Island. You can call that Greater Gig Harbor, but have lived downtown for the last years in the Finn Homes area. And we're so old, getting ready for a full there city council because I want to serve our community. I love where I live and, you know, as many as I think everyone else does. This is a place that you don't just grow as a family. So I want to be able to bring that perspective of having a young family in Gig Harbor and the needs of, you know, that next generation. A little bit more about myself, my professional career. I'm in the maritime industry. I'm currently with Tote Maritime, Director of Safety, oversee environmental and compliance issues and risk management. As far as education, graduated from Gig Harbor High School 2001. Went to TCC. So Tony, thank you for representing. And then also onto the University of Washington for Bachelor in Communications. And then just a few years ago, completed Executive MBA at Foster School of Business. So a lot of education in there. I also love to serve our community. So beyond coaching soccer teams and baseball teams, I'm also involved in a couple of nonprofits, the Permission to Start Dreaming Foundation and the Foss Waterway Seaport. And, you know, my love for the community have, you know, drawn me to want to serve on the city council and represent the citizens of Gig Harbor. I think I've run out of time. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And Seth, you may just want to close any other programs and kick anyone else in your house off the internet because you're freezing up a little bit. So I'm concerned about that.
Oh, no.
Yeah, concerned about that. Okay, finally, Spencer.
Yes, thank you, and good morning. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this together and all the folks who have woken up on this early Saturday morning and taken time out of their day to join us to become informed citizens. That's a great thing. My name is Spencer Aberstall. I am running for reelection for Gig Harbor City Council, Position 7. The reason that I am running is very simple. Gig Harbor is my home. It's where I was born and raised. I love it, and I want to take an active position and part in seeing its development, seeing that it's protected, and seeing that the future is insured for those who will follow us in the coming generations. I've been an active citizen in my community pretty much for the last 30 years of my life since I became an adult. I am a station manager for our community radio station KGHP FM, which is based at Peninsula High School. I am a member of Gig Harbor Quanis. I'm also a key club advisor at the Peninsula High School for Quanis. And basically, I'm running for reelection just again to ensure that the quality of life here in Gig Harbor that we appreciate and enjoy remains. And again, I was just, you want to take an active part in my citizenry and our community. I want to make sure that our citizens are represented, their voice is heard, and that we can all work together to ensure this town is the great place that it already is for the future. So thank you again, and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you all. Now we come to the questions. Each candidate will get up to 90 seconds to answer each question. Some of the questions we will indicate, you only have 60 seconds. Again, live audience questions can be texted to 253-948-6029. That's 253-948-6029. The candidate order will rotate with each question, so that for question number one, we'll start with Roger Henderson. Go ahead, Tony, and ask question one.
All right, question one is, what are your budgetary priorities for Gig Harbor? And why are these a priority?
Go ahead, Roger.
Okay, thank you. So if I understand the question correctly, you're looking for my budgetary priorities and why they're priorities. Well, clearly, Gig Harbor has a lot of things going on its plate right now. There's a lot of projects out there that are being built and that are being planned right now. Clearly, one thing that every city struggles with is maintenance, our maintenance budget. So my priority is, number one, ensure that we have enough funds set aside for good maintenance of our parks, of our roadways, and of our infrastructure. The reason is, it's a priority for me is if you don't maintain what you have, it starts to degrade, the service levels degrade, and the citizens of Gig Harbor, those of us that live here and call this home, are impacted by poor maintenance. As part of the Parks Commission, we are updating our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. And one thing that we got a very good score on was the maintenance of our parks, and I would like to continue with that as well as our other infrastructure and facilities. Thank you.
Brenda, you're next.
Thank you. So like Roger, I think that the traffic calming measures, such as the circles, the roads being cared for, I've always said you need to, like a house, care for what you have before you start adding on new things. So I think that's critically important. And continuing the projects and prioritizing them, I would like to see in the budget process prioritizing of projects, particularly, you know, like capital projects, based on some citizen input, what's most important to them, what's most cost-effective, and looking at a cost-benefit analysis of what will bring the most to the community at the lowest cost and prioritize from there. I also believe in focusing on the parks, our police, providing adequate funding for them is very important. The community policing that is done here in Gig Harbor is excellent. Chief Bucy with over 30 years is very well-respected, and I'd like to see those as priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth?
All right, hopefully I have a better connection now. Yes, this this is definitely one of the hot topics for the, you have to start with the comprehensive plan. You know, we have a lot of projects that are set out ahead of us, you know, a budget that meets those projects. And of course, you know, prioritizing it based on the needs of our citizens. I think, you know, personally, there's a few things that stand out to me, obviously around traffic and congestion. Anytime we have, you know, some of these projects and the impact that it has on our residents getting to and from Gig Harbor. I also look at the safety components of these projects. One of the things, sidewalks in my own neighborhood, I live just down the road from Harbor Ridge Middle School, and, you know, it's a beautiful area to walk. You've got that Jenny Wook's picture, that background there that is what, you know, many people like to enjoy. And it was amazing that it wasn't, you know, a sidewalk there to connect our middle school, small businesses, and local transportation. So those type of things stand out to me. There is 100 of those ideas and projects out there. What we've got to do is prioritize, see what our city staff can manage. Completely agree on the maintenance side of things, that we have to take care of what we already have, which is, you know, we're blessed to have quite a few things, all of our parks. And then, you know, being able to prioritize these things that we can, you know, handle these projects and not leave some off of the table, which has been discussed in some other forums that I've been on. So I think we got to take a close look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Spencer?
Yes, thank you. My budget priorities are what I believe that the voters have expressed are their priorities, and those include Gig Harbor Sports Complex, traffic improvements, of course, our community paddler stock, more police officers, our commercial fishing home port, and any opportunities to preserve land when given that opportunity. And that's pretty much it. I mean, we have a lot of things that are ongoing that we want to finish up, and we'll, of course, have new projects that will need to be taken care of as well. And so those are pretty much my priorities, which I feel are our citizens' priorities.
Thank you. Jenny?
Yes, thanks so much. So budgetary priorities, we're getting ready to start working on the 2022 budget on Monday. That proposed budget is $116 million. So I'm very much in favor of looking at the infrastructure because if we don't keep the infrastructure in top-notch condition, it's just going to cost us more money down the road as it degrades. I also asked for in the 2022 budget and the 2021 budget, funding for going out for a grant for sidewalks, actually near Harbor Ridge School on Prentice Avenue. Safety should be paramount in our city for our students and for our citizens. We know that Burnham Drive is going to get sidewalks next year, and it's going to be a little wider. So that is going to be a wonderful thing I was able to vote for and work hard on. It connects Gig Harbor North to downtown. It keeps bikers safe. It keeps citizens safe. So infrastructure for our roads to make sure our traffic can keep moving. Finish that roundabout on Harborview and Stinson. That's important. It'll keep the traffic moving. And safety issues, those are a lot of my infrastructure priorities as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, please, Tony.
All right. The second question is, Gig Harbor has grown more than 50% in the last decade. What are your priorities in further development? Speak specifically about density, affordable housing, and the Growth Management Act.
So we'll start with Brenda, then Seth, then Spencer, then Jenny, then Roger. So Brenda?
Great. Thank you for the question. So infrastructure hasn't kept pace with development. We've gone from 7,000 to over, I believe I saw anywhere from 11,000 to 12,000 in the census in 2020. The Growth Management Act requires a certain percentage of growth. Gig Harbor, based on the Buildable Lands Report from Pierce County, has already attained 93% to 94% of their 2030 goals. And they are resetting those goals for the next 20 or 30 years, I believe it's 24 years, and looking at what should the growth goals be. I think Gig Harbor, with all the recent growth, is in a position to be a part of conversations with the Pierce County Regional Coalition, as well as the Pierce County executives, to look at realistic growth goals. The city limits are, I think, really getting close to not having a lot of land left to be developed. I think it's really important to protect our natural resources and maintain our aesthetic appeal while prioritizing what gets done. And with everything, there needs to be a cost-benefit analysis and looking at urban growth areas, whether we annex them. But I think Gig Harbor is in a good position to make sure that the tree buffers are there, the canopy is there, the developments are aesthetically pleasing, and set realistic goals. We have to grow at some point, but let's negotiate what those realistically are. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth?
Yes, thank you. So, you know, definitely have seen that 50% increase over the last decade. You know, agree that as being, you know, a resident and seeing many neighborhoods go in, your first concern is, you know, are we going to be able to maintain the charm that Gig Harbor has with this type of growth? And I think that crosses through a lot of minds of Gig Harbor residents, especially ones that have been here for a long time. And, you know, I welcome people to Gig Harbor. I think it's an amazing place to live, and I want to share that with other people. So, you know, along with that, there is, you know, as far as density goes, many of our neighborhoods within Gig Harbor already are well-established and, you know, don't want to see too much of a change there. And then as far as affordable housing, that's definitely something that we need to address. You look at what it costs to buy a new home in Gig Harbor, and, you know, that's, unfortunately, it doesn't seem like it's for everyone. And so finding, you know, other ways of bringing, you know, a more diverse group into Gig Harbor, but also job creation can happen, you know, out of the affordable housing. Of course, there's things that we have to follow with the Growth Management Act that are put on us to be able to maintain, along with Pierce County and that growth perspective. But Gig Harbor, especially the city council, has to remain involved in that to be able to have our Gig Harbor solutions, right, that we face in many cases when we vote in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Spencer?
Yes, great question. So Gig Harbor at night has about 11,000 residents that live in the city limits. In the daytime, that population bumps up to about 20,000 for people who live outside our community that come in and utilize our services. We need to address that. If another new home were never constructed in Gig Harbor, we're still going to face an onslaught of new home construction from outside of our city limits by Pierce County. So we need to build our infrastructure up to meet those demands. Ways that we can do that are, for example, you know, our gas stations, I think, have six to eight gas pumps for company. We need to bump those up maybe to 12 to 16. We need more parking spots in our grocery shops, parking lots to accommodate those needs. I believe that a healthy community is a community that has people of all incomes and a mixed economy. And studies have shown that when communities have those conditions, they are stronger and are more benefited. So whatever we can do to make that happen, as far as affordable housing, Gig Harbor alone will not be able to do that. We're going to need to work with our state and our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny?
Thank you. So I'm the slow-growth candidate, and in 2018, I was involved in a moratorium, a building moratorium in Gig Harbor. Now, we have reduced density in Gig Harbor from what was allowed before 2018. We have stopped clearcutting in Gig Harbor. We have put larger buffers in whatever developments do happen so that this is a more neighborhood town. This is important to do. During the Growth Management Act, as I said, we have, we're 128 units to what's needed in 2030. Many cities in Gig Harbor and Pierce County are in the low 10%, 10% of what they're supposed to be having. So we need to make sure that our council and mayor stays very connected with those folks making Growth Management Acts decision and make sure that every city in Pierce County is treated equally. Now, affordable housing, we have some affordable housing coming into Gig Harbor North in the Village area, and that affordable housing will be at 70% of the average wage in Pierce County. As far as other affordable housing in Gig Harbor, we don't have a lot of land. The city owns no land at all, but we are working with other entities in Pierce County to figure out a way that we can all help with this problem. It's important, and it needs to be addressed, and I'm out of town.
Thank you. Roger?
Thank you. But clearly, growth in our wonderful town has been one of the issues I've heard often when I'm out canvassing. Growth and traffic, they end up going hand in hand. So the first question was priorities on further growth. Well, those of you that have heard me talk know that I stand for developing a sustainable growth model for the city of Gig Harbor. We are going to grow. The Growth Management Act mandates it. We have met our goals already or close to it for even 2030. So we need to start thinking and moving towards what's called a sustainable growth model. And you may say, well, what is that? It's usually models that include a human, economic, and environmental factors in community planning. We have to take a holistic view now of how we plan our growth. Density. Density is another big issue. Some people like one-acre lots. Some people like apartments. I'm in favor of a wide range of housing types within the city of Gig Harbor. We have a lot of different people here. We'd like to get more people in here that work in the community so we have a sense of community. And so a wider range of housing types community. And so a wider range of housing types is what I would be in favor of where they are applicable. The next thing, affordable housing. Well, I hope that we continue. And as Spencer mentioned, this is a regional issue, and it's going to take a regional solution. And I know the city's right now aligned with the South Sound Housing Agency to figure out what options there are for us. This is going to take a lot of planning. It's a very complex problem.
Thank you very much. And Jenny, please mute your, your microphone. Tony, could you please give the next question?
No problem. Thank you, Lydia. Question three is, speak to your experience in promoting equity through structural changes in institutions.
And in this question, we'll start with Seth, then Spencer, then Jenny, then Roger, and then Brenda. Seth.
Can you repeat that question? I think it just broke up a little bit right in the middle. It said, speak to your experience, and then it cut out. I'm sorry.
No problem. Speak to your experience in promoting equity through structural changes in institutions.
Okay, it still broke up again, but I believe it was speak to your experience with equity.
I can repeat it. I'm sorry, Tony. I think your microphone's not close enough to the microphone. Speak to your experience promoting equity through structural changes in institutions.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Got that. Appreciate it, Linda. So, yeah, so my experiences as far as this, you know, I mentioned some of my professional experience with Totmair Time Alaska. I'm on our senior leadership team there. And, you know, this is something that we look at, and we, we employ a number of people here, you know, locally in the Port of Tacoma, as well as Anchorage. And, you know, we want to bring a device, adverse group to that as well, you know, it makes, makes for a better company. And that's not much different than the same as our communities. Also, you know, I have other experience with nonprofits. I mentioned the Permission to Start Dreaming Foundation and the Foss Waterway Seaport, both of those, you know, heavily involved in our communities, whether it's for military veterans, first responders, as well as educational programs of the Foss Waterway Seaport and, you know, historical preservation. And, you know, open to the community and educating especially our youth, but getting involvement there. So yeah, that's mainly what I can speak to as far as past experience. I don't have any, you know, elected experience, that's why I'm running. So I hope to gain some more opportunities there and pass over with some of my experiences. Thanks.
Thanks, Spencer.
Yeah, this is an interesting question. I've never had it posed to me before, so I'm just not to kind of wing it. But I believe in equity. I manage the community radio station KTHP, the Peninsula School District, and one of our goals is to be able to provide people on the Key Peninsula who don't have Wi-Fi and internet access information. So the radio station does that. And that's what I believe in as far as equity. Also, as a member of Quanis and our key club, I work to, you know, promote young people, giving them opportunities to engage in our community and become involved and can take an active role in our citizenry. And I work with all kinds of students, boys and girls of all races, religions, and economic backgrounds. And as far as structural changes in institutions, I guess you have to be involved in those institutions to be able to affect any kind of change. I believe that change happens from within, and so just being involved, getting taking an active role in whatever you think is important is the way to go about that.
Thank you, Jenny.
Yes, thank you. So I, I support more diversity in our city hiring policies. And we just hired an African American police officer from Seattle into Gig Harbor. We have another person of color POC that we hired this year. That's pretty good for Gig Harbor, especially because our housing is so expensive. So it's a wonderful thing to have more diversity in our city. I was also very involved in establishing Indigenous Peoples' Day through our city council and through some of the ordinance that we passed. I'm very supportive of the Twolka Park Estuary downtown in Gig Harbor near the History Museum. We are in the process right now of conserving a piece of property by the wastewater treatment plant. This is also from the Purulip Tribe. And I believe that there's some artifacts in this area, so it's very nice to be able to vote to keep this property pristine and, and honor the, the information and any artifacts that are there from the Purulip Tribe. It's nice to see the honoring project, honoring our indigenous folks, peoples that were here before in Gig Harbor, and I look forward to, to having more opportunities to honor indigenous folks. We also have a welcoming certificate that I was able to sign on to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. I worked 30 years with a very, very large federal agency, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And that is an institution, I can tell you that. So making changes within an institution that large and that venerable is very challenging. I like to say that I did some things at a local level, at a smaller level as a supervisor during that time, mainly hiring a wider and more diverse type of engineers or planners or biologists, so that we can get some diversity. I feel that diversity is probably one of our strongest strengths. We can, we can make a lot better decisions when we have a lot of diverse input. One thing I would do as a city council member is set up commissions. I think we need a few more commissions within the city of Gig Harbor to get more public input. That then leads to more diversity. I support the diversity the city is already doing with the hiring process. And I'd like to also say that I will continue to support and acknowledge and share the story of our indigenous people that came before our European settlers in Gig Harbor. Their story is part of Gig Harbor just as much as everybody else's. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Yes, thank you. It's a great question. One of my platform priorities is to represent all citizens from all neighbors. I believe that diversity is strength, and I believe that the city should represent the population it serves. How can we do this? We get to know the citizens and hear their stories, and remember that we work on behalf of the citizens. We maintain consistent, transparent, compassionate, open, and honest conversations with our citizens. We acknowledge and respect all citizens with compassion. We encourage the diversity celebrations, the honor projects that Jenny spoke to. Really amazing things are happening there. And then special heritage months, days, provide policies and ordinances that make our city welcoming to all voices. I think working with places like the Gig Harbor History Museum within the schools would be a great way to have more culture and particularly our indigenous people's history of our lands. I think that another thing that can be done is make sure that voters are registered and show up so that their voices are heard. It's a representative government. Voter registration and turnout should not be a partisan goal. It should be a goal that all people have a voice and their votes, their vote equals their voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Tony.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, so for this question, you will only have 60 seconds. And the question is, how should the city of Gig Harbor address climate change?
For this question, we'll start with Spencer, then Jenny, then Roger, then Brenda, then Seth. Spencer.
Well, thank you for the question. Climate change is important. I believe everyone in our community wants to have a healthy environment from all political backgrounds, I think. Having a healthy, sustainable community is important to everybody. We need to find ways where we can, you know, make a difference. Our credit council member, Wook, for bringing the plastic bag single use plastics ban to the forefront of Gig Harbor. I think that was very important. Our citizens came out in great numbers to contact us to let us know that they support that. And so looking for opportunities where the city can make a difference and, you know, actually vote to be involved with climate mitigation and environmental protection is the way to go. I don't myself have any answers off the top of my head. It's a big topic. It's a big problem. And it's something that we all need to participate in together to make a difference. Otherwise, it's just going to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
So the first thing that we need to do is have city council members who understand that climate change is real. The second thing we need to do is to have electrified fleet as much as we can and as soon as we can. We also need to work on our stormwater and make sure that any stormwater that flows into our bay is healthy and doesn't harm our bay. And, and those are the three things that are topmost in my mind right now. But the topmost one is, of course, we need to have council members who understand climate change is real. We also need to take a look at Pierce County sustainability ideas and see where Gig Harbor can fit into that. We're a small city and we can't save the world, but we have to be part of the solution where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Well, thank you. And Jenny, you hit most of my points, so hopefully I won't be too repetitive. There's two areas that I'd like to focus on. Actually, a third one that Jenny brought up, that we do need people on the city council that acknowledge that we have a clear and present danger with climate change throughout Gig Harbor, throughout the state of Washington, and throughout the country and the world as well. There's two areas I'd like to focus on. One is the protection of our urban forest. Gig Harbor doesn't have any kind of an urban forest management plan. The city of Tacoma and Bremerton do. I'd like to do that, get one for the city so we can start protecting our trees. They absorb CO2, give us shade and everything else. The second thing that Jenny also touched on is electrification of our city fleet. City can take some measures to battle climate change. Electrification of our city fleet would be easy, convenient, and economically feasible. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Hi, thanks for this question. So climate change is upon us. And I, you know, you start with the thinking globally, acting locally. So what can we do locally? I think it's really important to include environmental science in our policies and planning. This can affect the harbor. This can affect salmon fishing, property values, quality of life, including wildfire, weather, and public health. I believe we need to reduce our CO2 commissions or emissions as a, as an important goal in city planning, investigate the cost benefit analysis, and replace shall with should and convert to an electric vehicle. I also believe we need to have things like charging stations, incentives to businesses and individuals for eco-building, and agree with partnering with the county coalition to look at available federal and state grants. They're a wonderful resource. They did a presentation at the end of September at city council. Encourage anybody to watch it. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
Yes, thank you. This is a loaded question, I mean, because I, I agree, this is not just, this, not just a local, but a global issue. And of course, we have our role to play in this as well. We can't think that we're too small. And so a lot of this goes into, you know, we talk about, you know, responsible growth and whether this is residential or commercial properties, the expectations that we have to stormwater as well, protecting our harbor, having adequate systems that remove heavy metals and particulates before they enter the water. I also look at, you know, the response that we've had to this too, right? As much as we want to be able to change it and try to correct the path of what's happening, we also need to look at what we can do to prevent issues like king tides that we've had in the harbor, which affected Scansy Park. And this, I remember the old restrooms that used to be there. And, you know, I saw the new construction going in. I thought, oh, this is just great. This is something, you know, for citizens of Gig Harbor, music in the park, another viewing platform. But then came to found out that there was greater reasons for it. Because of those king tides, what could have happened with that system could have put Ross Newage back into the harbor. That, oh, thanks. Gosh, wasn't looking. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Next question, please.
Okay, the next question is, according to an annual report in 2020 by the Washington State Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, property crime has went down by 5.5%. However, violent crime has increased by more than 32% with 50% of violent crimes being domestic violence in Gig Harbor. Given that the mess, given that domestic violence is the primary source of violent crime in Gig Harbor and occurs largely in the home, and women and children are the primary victim, how do you propose to reduce domestic violence in Gig Harbor?
For this question, we'll start with Jenny, then Roger, then Brenda, then Seth, and then Spencer. So Jenny.
How do you make people be kinder to each other and recognize each other and actually take care of their spouses? I, I'm not sure how you do that. But what I can tell you is that we have a police force. And when they are called to domestic violence issues, they handle this to try to de-escalate what's going on. I would actually really like to see Pierce County get involved. Pierce County has some mental health folks that I believe work out of the fire department. And sometimes on domestic calls, violence calls, they attend these meetings. They attend these calls and try to also de-escalate. I think it'd be really great if, if there was a way to identify where the domestic violence was happening and reach out and try to get these folks some help. It's, it's, it's a big issue. And, and women and children are the ones who are bearing the brunt of it. And, and it's, so I think we need to try to do everything within our power to get them, get them some help. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. This is a pretty tough question. However, I think there's certain things that can be done. One is, and it's been alluded to already, is getting those folks psychological and mental health services. They have to be, they have to know that they're available. So getting that message out, I think, is would be priority. Secondly, we need to look at some of the reasons that domestic violence happens. There's sometimes factors that play into this that makes it worse. I believe that we could work with Pierce County to maybe set up a domestic violence task force or response forces sometimes. I think there's people that might be better equipped to handle a domestic violence case, and I'd like to see these people part of that solution. So it's an incredibly complex question, and it's very now and very real. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Hi, thank you. This, this is very close to my heart. In my work as a nurse practitioner, working in pediatric critical care, I unfortunately have seen some victims. And I see the police and firefighters that respond to this, and I, my heart goes out. First of all, I think Chief Bucy, with his 30 years service, it, it's incredible. He has a dedication to community policing. And he's out talking with citizens, you know, in ABC News poll recently showed that the police are leaving in droves with what's happening, and Gig Harbor has amazing retention. And I think that starts with the leadership of Chief Bucy. You know, Gig Harbor overall has had their crime statistics go down two years in a row, but domestic violence is increasing. And here's why I think that's happening. I think that COVID had schools closed, businesses shut down, and unfortunately, people are in the homes together. And you're going to see more domestic violence. I think it's critical that we have smart COVID strategies to keep our schools and our businesses open, encouraging people to get vaccines and wear masks, keep things rolling, because those people are seen by other people and can be screened for potential problems with domestic violence, particularly in the schools. The other thing is providing adequate mental health resources and mental health resources to our firefighters and our first responders, police officers who are going to these situations and helping. They don't have a lot of resources for the family, and those should be available. Thanks.
Thank you, Seth. Seth? Okay, we'll move on to Spencer.
Yeah, um, you know, domestic violence is a terrible thing. I will relate to your experience I had when I was growing up. We had a family in our neighborhood. The parents were abusive. They were alcoholics. And the, the girl that lived there, my friend, many times we'd have to come down to our house to seek a safe place. I don't advocate what my father did, but he got tired of it and walked up there and grabbed the bottle out of the father's hand and said, if you ever hit your kid again, I'm going to come up here and beat you with this bottle. That's not the way to go. But what we need to do is offer people who are in a domestic violence situation an opportunity to get out of it. We need counseling for abusive people. We need shelters for people who are on the receiving end of domestic violence to be able to get out of the home and go to a safe place. And society wise, maybe we create some kind of laws that if a person is a domestic violence abuser, we can take some action with them legally, other than, you know, just throwing them in jail. You know, maybe, I don't know. There needs to be a solution to it because it is a problem and it needs to be addressed. And, you know, like I said, I've had some personal experience with it. And it's just, it's, it's terrible. Thank you.
Thank you Seth, you're back.
Oh, thank you. I lost connection there. So hopefully you guys can hear me okay. But it dropped this last time. So this is a very loaded question. And it's staggering to hear these type of numbers. You know, what I, what I refer back to is Chief Bucy wrote an article on police reform a few months ago about a lot of the changes that were taking place. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to read that. Which really limits a lot of what their interaction is. You know, one of the things that police are great for is diffusing situations. And it limits some of that interaction. And, you know, that's, it's terrible to hear these type of numbers on the increase. I know, you know, in some recent news, there has been some new laws that have passed on domestic violence, especially when it takes place in front of children and putting those individuals in jail. You know, that's, that's maybe one way of trying to, to deal with these things, but it's not taking care of what's already occurred. We shouldn't have to get to that point where, you know, a mother or wife or girlfriend or children have to experience that. And I know it's very obviously dear to our first responders and what they have to, you know, see and experience and to feel limited in your role is really tough. So I think we need, you know, we gotta, as a community, we have to support and encourage and, you know, try to change these types of cultural happening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next question Tony.
All right, question six. On September 27, the Gig Harbor City Council approved ordinance 1466. It interim zoning controls for emergency shelters, emergency housing, permanent supportive housing and transitional housing in designated areas for a six month period. This was to meet the state imposed Sept 20, September 30 deadline. The planning commission and the city council will study and refine the zoning controls. How do you believe the city of Gig Harbor should address the needs for emergency housing, transitional housing and permanent supportive housing?
So we'll start with Roger, then Brenda, then Seth, then Spencer, then Jenny. Roger.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was there when that was going on, the emergency shelter ordinance. I think it's a good idea. It was obviously something the city had to do. Seems like it might have been done a little bit sooner, but so the three areas that I think that the question said that we should be addressed would be the emergency, the transitional and the permanent supportive housing. Again, this is a regional problem. It's not unique to the city of Gig Harbor. It's going to take a regional solution. The city has and should continue to work with Pierce County. They've got a lot more resources than we do and expertise on this issue. I'm in favor of setting up the shelters where we need them. Luckily, we don't have a huge homelessness problem in the city of Gig Harbor. I'm, I'm pleased about that. Doesn't mean that we don't have some issue. But I think it's high time that we started doing something like that. And I would pledge to work with the city staff, our planners and engineers to come up with unique solutions and innovative solutions. There's a lot of way to, there's numerous and sundry ways to fix this and to deal with these challenges. And so again, working with Pierce County and our, and the state would be one of the best things that we can do to help address this issue.
Thank you Brenda.
Yeah, thank you. I, the recent ordinance that the city passed, I think is a good thing because it allowed the city to maintain local control on what's happening from the state level. And so that they can make some smart decisions and work on this with the, with the planning commission. Most recent point in time homeless count that I could find for Gig Harbor when I first started to decide to run and did research was around 49 people in the greater area with 24 in the city limits of Gig Harbor. Shelter is a basic human need. It should be provided those, for those who cannot obtain resources. And there is a history of some well-run models throughout our area. And Roger talked about partnering with our county and regional partners. I think that's really important to help provide for those who cannot maintain. I think that well-run models throughout our area, you don't even know that they're there, that they're providing this, this need for these people. And it needs to be destigmatized. A large percentage of children's families and working people are part of the homeless and they deserve our compassion. I'd like to see, you know, continuing to work with the community and providing input and forums and smart policies moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you Seth.
All right, I got disconnected again. I'm going to leave my video off and hope to have a better connection. So, uh, from what I could gather, it sounds like this is about the homeless shelters. And so just to speak to that, just recently I was getting gas and picked up the, the gateway. That on the cover story, there was about homeless shelters per, you know, new state law. And, um, you know, just grabbing the paper, put it down on the counter and the individual behind the desk said, I don't know about you, but I'm really happy to see this. And it, you know, kind of, you know, of course you perk up and you're like, well, you know, tell me more. And the gentleman went on to tell me about his experience as a youth being homeless in Gig Harbor and the limited resources. He did have, you know, some friends that he was able to stay with, but you know, he, he actually felt like, he goes, this is, this is incredible. He goes, I know so many people that need these type of resources to get back on their feet. And it was really, I mean, shocking to, to hear this guy. And, you know, I appreciate that he shared it with me. And, you know, I think for, we have to do a great job of educating our citizens on this new law. For some people, they just see lots of red and they think homeless shelters, they think of tent encampments. That's not what these are. These are, these are intended to provide resources for people to, you know, have the, the basics in life, which we all deserve. So, thank you.
Spencer.
Yes, thank you. I am one of the only council members who voted against this. My gut feeling is, is that the state is laying the groundwork for taking advantage of communities to shelter homeless communities. Homelessness is a terrible problem, but it's a problem that is created by other problems. You're not going to solve homelessness unless you solve those other problems first. And they're so wide and so varied that it's almost impossible to try to tackle that problem. My fear is that the state has learned that they could shelter people in hotels and churches and private businesses through COVID. And they're probably thinking to themselves, well, we did it for COVID patients, let's do it for the homeless. I also believe that the governor is going to end the eviction moratorium. So we're going to see a, a new wave of homelessness that's going to be coming to our communities. And then also people who are opposing the vaccine mandates are going to be losing their jobs. And that's going to create more homelessness as well. And already the already given economic slowdowns that are starting to take place. So we need to do something about homelessness. It doesn't, it's not just the homeless people that are affected. It's the community around them, the businesses that can be interrupted or disturbed by homelessness. So it's, it's a big problem. It's not going to get tackled soon. And I think the problem actually will start to continue to get worse.
Thank you. And I just wanted to explain that one of the reasons that we haven't been able to spotlight on Seth is because his video is, is out. So just, I'm sorry about the video of me during his answer of the question. But we're hoping that he can get his, um, his technology going there. So finally Jenny, you go ahead.
Thank you. So I just want to echo everything that Brenda Lichen said on this issue. You know, the state passed this law and the city council also passed it to send it to the planning commission because we do need to maintain some local control. But let's face it, you know, those folks who find themselves without a home, without a shelter deserve our compassion. And whenever possible, when they want it, then we need to try to get them a roof over their heads. We need to try to get them some care. And, and our planning commission will decide, hopefully, exactly where and how many. We've heard our future mayor speak about, and I was so proud to hear her say this, that with good models in place, that you really don't know which house is housing those folks who find themselves without a roof over their head. This is definitely not about tent cities. They're not allowed in Gig Harbor. This is definitely not that way. It is about caring for those who are less fortunate than we are. And I do think we need to accept that responsibility and for those folks who need a roof over their head, help them out, find them out. And whether it is an emergency housing or transitional housing or permanent supportive housing, Gig Harbor needs to be involved in this and we need to try to, to help those people who, who need help at this time.
Thank you. Um, this will be the last question Tony.
All right, final question is also on September 27, the city council approved ordinance 1467 and imposed emergency moratorium on new applications for short, short-term rentals for the next six months. The stated purpose was to review the, um, the current structure for short-term rental approved, the short-term rental approval process. What is your stance on short-term rental and whether the process needs to be changed?
We'll start with Brenda and then Seth, then Spencer, then Jenny, then Roger. Brenda.
Hi, um, thank you for the question. Yes, I saw, um, you know, at the end of September where city council supported an emergency resolution to stop permit application or to put a hold on permit applications for Airbnbs. And citizens have spoken up on both ways in moving this process forward. I'm happy to see that the city council put this to the planning commission and that in the upcoming planning commission meetings, they're going to have input from affected citizens, groups, businesses, talking about the Airbnb. I see that it needs to be, have potential structure. There wasn't a clear structure on how Airbnbs were licensed, permitted in the city. So that they're going to get input and make some policies, which I think are important. I am concerned for our businesses or people I've talked to who were going to open these Airbnbs. Part of these bring income into families that need the income. And I think we need to listen to what the citizens are saying and move forward with a positive approach so that Airbnbs and short-term rentals can be a part of our community in a responsible way that respect property owner's rights, business rights, and then, you know, stay within the law of what the city can and cannot do. Thanks.
Thanks. Seth, and if you could turn your camera on, we could spotlight you.
Yes, okay. Thank you. So, yeah, this was another interesting topic that came up locally for Gig Harbor. And I know citizens definitely have, as have raised their voices of concerns in both directions. You know, the first part that I, I heard on like, you know, the greater impacts was covered by King Five News and, you know, covering the story of, of what, you know, transpired in Gig Harbor, it definitely got some, some noticeable coverage. And some of the, you know, the things that I've heard from, from different folks is, you know, the concern over how it's handled, right? To put a six-month moratorium, a lot of people think of that as a freeze or that we're incapable of managing this sort of, sort of thing. And, you know, in order to build a process, these things, it wasn't a, a flat stop, you know, day one, there was a five-day called a great but nonetheless, and, you know, some of these arguments are, you know, for wanting to have it and doing it in the right way. But it's some more people can experience Gig Harbor brings.
Thank you Spencer.
Yeah, uh, thank you. This was a new topic to me. I, you know, really didn't kind of know that this was going to be an issue that was important to voters until, until really I had a conversation with council member Wood. But, you know, judging by the reaction that we got from the community, it seems like there, it's, it's a pretty 50/50 split. We do need to address this issue. There needs to be compliance for people who do short-term rentals. But I believe that they're a thing of the future and I don't think they're a bad thing. It'll actually draw people to our community, give them opportunities to visit, maybe not a hotel atmosphere, but you know, get a little taste of what it's like to live in Gig Harbor. So I think that's a good, good thing to have that opportunity. It's also probably, you know, can be an economic benefit for people who want to augment their income. And I just believe that we need to get a handle on this and, you know, make it appropriate for anyone who does get a license to have a rental in their home, whether they're living there or they live outside the community and just rent the house for, again, economic reasons. Thank you.
Thank you Jenny.
Yes, thank you. I am really happy that this was forwarded to the planning commission. I think it's, uh, that is the very place for them to study what is being said and what is, what needs to come out of this. Let's remember that the only folks who spoke in favor of short-term rentals were those folks who were going to make money from short-term rentals. So there are cities who have put a ban on short-term rentals because they value their neighborhoods. The Gateway, I think, had a, had a headline, will Gig Harbor become a tourist resort? Or will it take care of its neighborhoods? So I, I'm a big fan of neighbors having say, more say of what happens in their neighborhoods. HOA homeowners associations do not allow short-term rentals in their neighborhoods. Why is that? That needs to come before the planning commission. What is the pros? What are the cons of having empty houses, transitional houses in your, empty houses in your neighborhood with transient folks? And those houses can be empty sometimes. And you have new cars that come by that you don't recognize. I know my neighborhood doesn't want to have short-term rentals. Is that true of all the neighborhoods? We don't know. And that's why it needs to go to the planning commission. That's why it is. It's going to be studied. And I look forward to both sides being represented and maybe finding a better place. It'll come back to the council again as well. And I look forward to a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you Roger.
Thank you. Well, I, along with the others, am very happy that this topic was pushed on to the planning commission for further study and for public input later. It's clear that Gig Harbor needs some structure on short-term rentals within the city limits. They do provide income for a lot of people. Some of our fishermen need it during the time they're out fishing at sea. It is a tricky subject. It is a balance between local property rights, your property rights as an owner of your property and preservation of our neighborhoods. Jenny's brought up quite a few good points. A lot of topics need to be looked at. This is not a simple yes or no. So I am quite in favor of continuing this process of getting public input and looking at the pros and cons of this. And I do look forward to dealing with this topic. And I do look forward to dealing with this topic as a member of the city council in 2022.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements. Surprisingly, we did not have any live audience questions. Each candidate has up to one minute for their closing statement. We will change the order of the opening statements. And so we will start with Seth, then Spencer, then Jenny, then Roger, then Brenda. Seth? And please unmute the camera so we can spotlight you.
Okay, I'm, I'm hoping it sticks. So thank you very much for, for welcoming all of us. These are some great topics. I love hearing the perspectives of the other.
I'm sorry, Seth. We can't hear you.
Well, thank you.
I'm sorry, Seth.
We all make each other better in this, in this.
I'm really, really sorry, Seth, but you're, you're breaking up. So why don't we put you to the end and see if you can try to figure out how to fix that? So, because you're, you're not, you're breaking up. So we'll put you at the end and we'll let Spencer go ahead.
I don't know if you guys can hear me.
We can't hear you, Seth. I'm not sure what's going on. So why don't we move on to Spencer? We'll come back to you. Okay? Go ahead, Spencer.
Thank you. I'm just grateful for the opportunity to be allowed to speak to our constituents. I'm grateful that Seth was able to make it here to this morning. Unfortunately, he had some, obviously connectivity issues, but I think it's great when citizens have an opportunity to have a choice and get to see the difference between the two candidates. So I'm grateful. He's, he's been a great opponent and he's been respectful. He's done a great job with his campaign. And I look forward to the outcome, whether it's up or down for either of us. I think Gig Harbor is going to win. Again, I've been especially grateful for the opportunity to serve my community for the last four years and give, if given an opportunity to do it again, I would relish the opportunity. Again, I believe that our citizenry needs to be represented by people who will listen to their voices and I've come to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jenny?
Yes, thank you. Going forward, I will vote for policies that keep a future Gig Harbor healthy, safe, and a functioning hometown for all of our citizens. And I ask for the honor of your vote. Now more than ever, it is vital. We have city council members who believe in facts, data, and science. We need council members who respect and treat our employees and all citizens with honor and dignity. We need council members who will vote for policies now and for a future of Gig Harbor, preserving our wonderful town for kids and grandkids and their grandkids. That's why I'm supporting Brenda Lycan and Roger Henderson for council. I hope you will too. And Google them, check them out. And I look forward to your vote. Thanks so much, everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you. Seth, let's try coming back to you. And if you could speak for a while with your camera on and then turn your camera off, but continue speaking so that we can spotlight at least your name. That might work. Okay? So go ahead, Seth. Turn on your camera and your mic.
All right. Thank you for going through this with me. I'll turn off my camera now. All right. So thank you. In, in closing, I just want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this. Very interesting topics. Great to hear from the other council members and hearing your perspectives. All of this makes us better and helps us serve our community in a stronger way. I look forward to the next coming weeks. A lot, a lot to come. Please get out and vote. And I look for your support. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. That worked really well. Okay, Roger?
Okay, thank you very much. And elected, thanks. Thanks. A big thanks for the challenging questions. These are some of the toughest questions I've had to field at a short notice like this. And so I see it's a great opportunity to hear from other members of the council that are running. Just a few things I pledge to you when elected. I will work with our city planners and engineers to develop sustainable growth models for the city to start tackling the challenges and opportunities that face us. I will provide environmental stewardship of our water resources, land, and forests. I represent everybody downtown, uptown, and in North Gig Harbor equally. I plan to bring back respect for our city staff. I will continue to acknowledge and promote the story of our native people. It's part of what made Gig Harbor so great. Support small business and encourage our working waterfront and maintain Gig Harbor's natural beauty and charm. Thank you. And don't forget to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda?
Hi, thank you. So I believe that Gig Harbor's best days can be ahead. I think we can work together on behalf of our citizens with integrity, respect, compassion. We can support preservation of our historic downtown. We can ensure that any growth is responsible, well-planned, and that infrastructure keeps up with any development. We can compassionately listen to citizens from all neighborhoods of Gig Harbor and support what they've asked for. The Village Shopping Center, new sports complex, traffic, parking solutions, and access to the harbor for paddlers, boaters, and fishermen. I believe to Gig Harbor deserves city leaders who are committed to building consensus and bringing people together so things can get done in our city. I'd be honored to have your vote and appreciate any support. I am endorsed by Gig Harbor firefighters, Congressman Derek Kilmer of the Washington Six Congressional District, but most importantly, so many citizens in our beautiful city. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you all. Tony?
The candidates in valid order are for position one, Ginny Wook and Robert Wild. Position two, Roger Henderson and John Skancy. Position three, Jim Prannick and Brenda Lycan. And position seven, Seth Storseth and Spencer Abresol.
You should receive your ballot by October eighteenth. I've already gotten mine. Be sure to vote early and no later than November second. You, we would like to thank the candidates who participated, the Timekeeper, Terry Baker, Tacoma Pierce County League of Women Voters, and our community sponsors, the Affordable Housing Consortium, Black and Indigenous Organizing, Grit City Co-op, Latinx Unidos of South Sound, South End Neighborhood Council, Sumner Waller Community Association, the Tacoma Urban League, Vibrant Schools, and the YWCA of Pierce County. I really want to thank my co-moderator as well, Tony Hester. You can watch other League of Women Voters candidate forums at www.tocomapierce.lvv.org. Read your voter's pamphlet and look at vote411.org where you can find answers to questions posed to all candidates running for office. Read the candidates' websites and do everything you can to be an educated voter. And don't forget to vote before November second. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful day.